If I could ask everyone, please rise for the pledge. Good evening. Thank you all for joining. It's great to have a packed house and we appreciate your combination and movement's occasion to AC problem in the library. So we moved the meeting here so everyone can be a little more comfortable. The first item for this evening is the approval of minutes from our previous meetings. We will take each one individually since we had different participation in each session. For the first approval of the business meeting, budget workshop of April 6, 2017, we have a motion. Motion by Mr. Tomio, second by Mrs. Malalito. Questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Five zero. Second, approval of the meetings of our, the minutes of our special meeting on April 19. I'll remind everyone that Mrs. Freed, Mr. Tomio, Mrs. Weiss, who are in attendance there, we have a motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Freed, second by Mr. Tomio. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Seeing three. Opposed? Zero. Abstentions? Two. Three zero two. Noting that Mrs. Malalito and Mr. Weiss are the abstentions. Approval of meetings, best of the minutes of the special meeting of April 25th, again noting that all were present excluding the, do have a motion to approve those minutes. Motion by Mrs. Malalito, second by Mrs. Freed. Those in favor? Four. Opposed? Zero. Abstentions? One. Noting Lomena. Last but not least, approval of the minutes of our budget hearing and working session of May 4th. All were present, do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Freed, second by Mr. Tomio. Questions? Comments? Seeing none. Favor? Five zero. With that administrative business out of the way, I will turn it over to Dr. Bossard for commenting.
Thank you, Mr. Lomena. All I can say is it's a good thing the air conditioner was not working in the library and we decided to move this meeting to the auditorium. We should know that our Harley Knights would be so well represented by family and friends and it's wonderful to see you all here tonight. We apologize for the very slight delay in calling the meeting to order. We do have some very special guests with us tonight and not the least of which is our favorite Harley Avenue Principal, Mrs. Malone.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? I have a pretty loud voice. At Harley Avenue Primary School, we are safe, polite, helpful, kind, respectful, and responsible. That is the Harley promise that we recite at the school every morning. Tonight, we are honoring our December through June Nights of the Month. These children have been responsible, respectful, helpful, patient, friendly, honest. We are very proud of them. They are all of the qualities of a Harley Knight. This is a big honor for those students and they were all celebrated at a school-wide pep rally each month. So we are first going to start with our second graders. I would like to announce, I'll announce all of them first and we can clap and take pictures. Ella Muley from Mrs. Cheyenne's class, can come up. David Palencia from Mrs. Simpson's class. Kaylee Mossy from Mrs. Gallagher's class. Giselle Palacios from Mrs. Camerata's class. Olivia Geisley from Mrs. Shapiro's class. Olivia White from Mrs. Swycourt's class. And Damian Canelo from Mrs. Gallagher's class. Let's hear it for our second grade Parents, you can come and take pictures. And now our first grade Nights of the Month. From Mrs. Morris's class, Joey Meyer. From Mrs. Powell's class, Georgia Frieder. From Mrs. Lane and Thomas's class, Giovanna Sofield. From Mrs. McKenna's class, Misam Abbas. From Mrs. Morris's class, Nicole Pop. From Mrs. Powell's class, Christopher Montaroso. And from Mrs. Lane and Thomas's class, Emily Gerbe. Let's hear it for our first graders. And now our kindergarten nights. From Mrs. Jansen and Mansonelli's class, Dylan Javari. From Mrs. Bobe's class, Mile Veramsky. From Mrs. Sealback's class, Fatima Aguilar. From Mrs. LaBarber's class, Loan Pinkie. From Mrs. Jansen and Mansonelli's class, Chloe Kudjimitros. From Miss Schlieben's class, Mathias Lopez. So I just want to thank the Knights for their hard work and compassion to all of the students at Harley Avenue. They are great role models. So thank you and parents, thank you. You've done a wonderful job with them.
I'd just like to take a second to acknowledge Mrs. Malone traveling, instituted the Knights' program. I think it's a fantastic way to acknowledge some of our great students at Harley and I think it also is great to infuse our board meetings with the enthusiasm and smiles and some of our youngest students. So thank you for creating the program. It's
Now with Mr. Lomena and Mrs. Malone's permission, I think we can ask our Harley Knights if they'd prefer to stay through the remainder of the meeting or if you'd prefer to go home or ask your parents to take you for ice cream. Enjoy your ice cream. Thank you all for coming, moms and dads, grandmas and grandmothers, and friends and
All right. Thank you. That was great. The next item on our agenda for this evening is a board recognition of donations. If I could ask Mrs. Weiss to please walk the community through the donations for this evening.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'm going to go through the donations. I just want to highlight two of the donations just because of the video. So the first donation is the SPGI, which stands for Standard and Poor's Global Industry, is a political action committee. It's a charity management program on behalf of Mr. Leonard Romato. He donated $240 to fund 217 finals regents review programs. The second one is the Trust Workplace Giving Program on behalf of the Giorgio family that donated $699.74 to fund the 2017 finals and regents review programs. The third one is the BK Elwood LLC donation via Ingleburton Construction of $500,000. As you remember, that, this particular donation, number three, is the money that was voted for district as a result of the Oak Tree Theory Project and that the board will be discussing the best way to allocate these funds. So we just received that check recently. The fourth is from the Elwood Middle School PTA, donations $5,000 to fund improvements to the sixth grade common area of the Elwood Middle School. And the three, if anybody's driven by the cafeteria in the middle school, you will notice that there are three cherry trees and two maple trees that were also donated and were planted and those are to give shade into the, what looks like a city block playground over there. The fifth one is for the Harley Every Primary School PTA, donating $1,730 to fund Barbara Bigley Memorial Fund. Bigley was a kindergarten teacher for years in our district, then she retired and she came back and volunteered for years. And she was a beloved teacher. She was very big into Dr. Seuss and I believe this money was from the Dr. Seuss fundraiser that they did years long ago. They also donated $127 to the Harley PTA to fund transportation expenses related to kindergarten orientation. And if you were to ask probably any of the parents that were just here in first and second graders, that's a wonderful program and the highlight of it is to take a bus ride around the district. Finally, the Coach, Coachwell Foundation donating $250 to grant to fund the student support program for ex-elementary students enrolled in Italian language classes for the 2016, 2017 school year. And what that is, is five students will get a $50 scholarship to enhance the love of the Italian language. Now I just want to go back to the donations of one and two and some of those finals and regents. Those donations are a job match. So corporations, if you donate money, they will match what you donate. And I actually talked to these residents and they were able to select what they wanted to donate. And I think that it's a wonderful opportunity for every resident to look to their corporations and see if there is any sort of matching program and if we are listed and what type of programs there are. So I want to thank everybody. We can't survive, well, we can't survive, we enhance. All this money enhances our programs in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. And just one point of additional clarification. I think Weiss alluded to the use of the $500,000 that came from BK Elwood. There was a resolution within our business agenda to specifically authorize when the board takes action, funding of that $500,000 to go towards the ERS retirement contribution reserve. So we have indicated that that's where the money will go. We anticipate taking, we anticipate taking formal action later today through that resolution. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Having covered the donations in detail, we'll move to item G on our agenda, which is the update from the superintendent as well as the update from our student. It is Matthew Weiss. I'll actually ask Matthew Weiss to come up first. Give
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to the Elwood community. If you don't know, my name is Matthew Weiss and I'm a senior at Elwood John Glenn High School. I just came to talk about a few events and things that have been going on in my high school. So what's been going on lately is four boys basketball players were recognized at an awards dinner for the county. The high school kick line had Dancing with the Teachers last Friday night and it was a very cool show. It's a great event to come to. The John Glenn High School Triumph had a concert and it was at the library and I heard it was amazing and the Triumph inductees were really good. On May 1st, it was the deadline for seniors to choose a school for next fall. So if you see any seniors, you can ask them where they're going. They should know by now. If they don't, it's unfortunate, but the seniors are very happy right now. AP testing was the first two weeks of May and for those two weeks, you could see students studying, really trying to get that college credit or trying to get that five on that test. The High School Springs Concert for the Band was last night, the class of 2017's last band concert and the seniors were recognized by Mrs. and it was a really cool night and a very memorable one for the seniors. Spring sports are coming to an end and teams are having a senior day to recognize their seniors and to recognize all their players and all the achievements they had over the season. Something really interesting that's coming through the senior classes, we're having an outside event organized by a lot of the senior members to really get that camaraderie and to bring the senior class together before the end of the year. So what it is, is kind of like a game of tag where we're all gonna either meet up after school someday and just enjoy our company and enjoying the last couple of weeks of school. Events coming up is the progress reports are coming out tomorrow. On Saturday, there's a junior class event where the juniors are gonna go somewhere as a way to really connect. The high school war night, high school war night is on the 23rd. It's at 7:00 PM. The high school memorial day ceremony is on the 29th. The second spring concert for the chorus and orchestra is on the 27th at 7:00. We have a high school pickleball tournament in memory of our dear friend Sean O'Neil on the, on June 5th. The senior banquet is on the 6th of June and the last day of classes and the senior day is on the 9th. I just would like to say thank you to the Board of Education for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak and to try to become a better public speaker. I know it doesn't sound too good when it's coming out, but I'm trying. I hope one day maybe I'll be able to talk. So thank you.
First of all, Matthew, thank you very much. Secondly, I think you're doing a fine job with your public speaking and I've seen you rehearsing for your courtroom appearances and I think your skill set is very well established. I'd like to thank you for serving this capacity, but I would invite you to do it one more time at the June 15th meeting because I believe we may have something to express our appreciation. We'll ask you to come one more time. Just aside, Matthew's part of a group of high school students that I meet with semi-regularly. We've referred to it as the superintendent's round table and it's a group of seniors who really have nothing but the best interests of the students that will follow them at John Glenn High School in mind. And the amount of insight that I've gained from having to interact with the seniors, of which Matthew is one of the more vocal members, has been very enlightening, very important and has really guided some of the work we've done this year and will continue to do in the future. So Matthew, I want to publicly thank you and your senior colleagues for all that insight that we've gained this year and I think we'll do it one more time before we let you graduate. So thank you. I will keep my remarks brief as we do have a very important presentation to follow, but I would be remiss if I did not thank the board and Ms. Lockman for all of the hard work that was done in preparing the now successful budget for the 1718 school year. For those of you that were not familiar, the budget passed at a percentage of 82% support for the community. That is a high watermark. It is not a mark that is typical of the Elwood School District. Last year's revote was slightly higher, so we didn't break a record, but it was rare air that we entered, which I think shows the very strong community support for the spending plan that the board painstakingly developed with the administration. When I arrived here in July and had conversations with the board and Mrs. Lockman, having witnessed last year's budget cycle and really versed myself in some of the history of the financial difficulties that the community has experienced, I said I really believe the community deserves a year off from hearing about reductions and cuts and painful choices that needed to be made. And due to some hard works and dedication and some very fortunate circumstances that fell in our favor, we had that year. And I think it was reflective in an 82% successful budget vote. So I can't thank the community enough for your support. I can't thank the board and the administration and everyone who participated, the budget advisory committee and everyone else who had a part in the process. I think it was a clean process. I think it was a good process. I think we have a very solid plan in place. In addition, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Becky Marsh, who's joining us tonight as a board member-elect. She'll be joining us effective July 1st, taking the very large shoes being left behind by Mr. Lomena. We congratulate you and we look forward to welcoming you to the board. And having had some good dialogue with the board about some transitional planning, we can discuss that during our orientation on Thursday, but we'd very much like you to attend the remaining meetings that we have on the calendar so we can begin a smooth transition through your role. So congratulations to you. It was a very, very close trustee election. When reviewing the results from other districts, there wasn't any like it. For those not familiar, the margin was two votes, which should show our community that every vote counts and that we had two strong residents who clearly had support within the community. So I think that speaks very highly of our community, our residents in our school district. All of that said, we will be moving forward with a presentation tonight about the capital bond issue and some other important projects going on. We have some other matters to take care of before that, but that will be a big focus of our new board here on next school year. Having a successful budget in place was extremely important for program, for instruction, and now we need to take a look at our facilities, our structures, our grounds, and that will be a major focus in the coming months and we'll hear more about it in just a bit.
Great. Thank you. So with that, I'll open it up for our first residence remarks. The board encourages all residents to attend these meetings if this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization they represent at the meeting. How much can be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes, consistent with board policy 2351. Public discussion of matters relating to staff students or others of which the reputation, privacy of right to do processes could be in some way violated is prohibited. With that, I'll ask any residents who wish to make some remarks to approach the meeting.
Hello. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Moreno. I'm a parent of three here in the Elwood District and I also have the honor this year of being the advising attorney for the John Glenn Mock Trail Team, of which Mr. Weiss was one of our three senior members and one of our primary attorneys. And since none of the students are attorneys yet, they're not really measuring self-promotion, so that's why I'm here. So to give them the self-promotion that they lack. It was an absolutely historic season for this mock trail team and I don't say that lightly. They came in to the bar association state tournament. They get a packet of material. It's about that thing in November. It's a case. This was a malicious prosecution case. They're given affidavits, fat powers, other proof. They have to come up with a case for the plaintiff, a case for the defendant. The amount of time they put in was unbelievable. Unbelievable. They finished in the preliminary rounds six out of 26 high schools in Suffolk, their highest finish ever. They went into the championship They went into the championship bracket. They beat Harlow Hills West to advance to the Elite Eight for the first time ever. They went against an undefeated West Babylon High School, who was ranked number three in the county, beat them, went to the Final Four, where they faced the number-two-ranked high school in the county, which was Bay Shore, who was undefeated, and they tied at the federal courthouse. It was a tie in points and then after the sort of arcane tie-breaking procedure, which we're still trying to figure out, they were formally eliminated. But needless to say, they got the attention, the big attention of Suffolk County Law Association because I was getting messages and texts from members of the Law Association about John Glenn and every time they walked into the state courthouse or the federal courthouse as a team with their jackets, I was getting pictures from somebody saying, "Hey, John Glenn just walked into the courthouse." As a result, they got invited to the Law Day competition at Northport, which is just a handful of Suffolk and Nassau high schools. You have four freshmen who are going into 10th grade who have been invited to the Federal Law Association. They have a program this summer, it's either a week or two weeks, held in conjunction with Toro Law School where they learn trial advocacy. So, those four freshmen, they were selected to go, they're going. They also raised money for a child advocacy program here in Suffolk County and they went and they participated, where they met with students and they talked about life skills with them and Ms. Geiser's gonna expand that. And there's two reasons they did this well. Number one, whoever made the decision to put an English teacher in charge of the mock trial team gets a pat on the back. Most of these schools have history teachers and I love history, it's my favorite subject, but the skills that they need, and they don't need them just to be lawyers, they need them to advocate for themselves. They were parsing arguments, questioning, persuasive arguments. They were writing out legal cases, they were doing questions. It was great. And Ms. Geiser was a home run. The amount of time she put in was crazy. She'd arrange to Skype with them on weekends for two hours. They'd get to the library, she'd be at home, computers are up. They would text me what they were doing, they would email me stuff. She would, they all, all these kids, they were doing a million things, okay? There were sports, there were other clubs. She'd bring them in at 5:00, order some pizzas, they'd get to work, 7:00, 7:30, everybody's going home. And the second thing that was really the factor with these kids, I, it is very impressive to see something come from just sort of this unorganized place and come so quickly and their confidence, you could see their confidence just building and building and building. And they would throw things at me. I would be on the bus when you texted me, they're on the bus going, I wanted to think and I was coming out of court and Matt texted me, "Hey, what if I ask this line of questions? You gotta work." It was, they were on it, they were on it, they were working so hard. And when you look at these competitions, it's always the same schools in the championship. It's Ward Melville, it's Bay Shore, I'm winning the whole thing. It's William Floyd and they've had these programs going for years. Their kids get credit, they get school credit for it because of the amount of work. And all of a sudden, John Glenn came in and now they are truly on the radar because I'm talking to people who are just bringing them up, "Oh, you're from Elwood John Glenn?" I judged them, I judged all these competitions. So, why am I here? I'm here because I want to let you know about this hard work that really just ended and it was from November until then. And we only had three seniors and they did a fantastic job, Matt was one of them. And, you know, whether they go to law school or not, they're ready, they're ready to advocate for themselves. A lot of these kids, they don't know how to do that. These kids know how to do it. One of the kids came up to me and said, "I was, I got into an argument with my mother" and she said to me, "Don't mock trial me." I was like, "All right, don't get into an argument with your mother, that's good, that's good. I'm glad they worked that for you." So, the only blurb that we had, besides Dr. Boss's tweets, which are great, was we hit the website at the end of April and what I'd like to see is just a little more oomph in the fall when we're getting kids in and during the year as they're progressing. So, we keep these kids in and we keep them involved. I'm gonna go get some of those nights out there because some of them look like they might be good down the road. So, that's what we're really looking to do, just get a little more publicity early on so that these kids get in there. They did a fantastic job. If you could have seen that hand they're doing, I know Dr. Bossa came to one of the rehearsals, one of the practice sessions, they were really phenomenal. They just comported themselves and when they won, they won with humility and when the very few times they lost, because they only lost really once, they did the all-around. Great job, walked out and they did whatever trial lawyer does. They went back, we got in the classroom and we all sat back and we discussed what to do better next time and how we may get rid of it and everything else. They deserve some congratulations and I thank you very much.
Mr. Moreno, I can't thank you enough for two things. You're very kind words, number one. I agree, Ms. Geiser did a phenomenal job working with the team and she's held in very, very highly guard by her colleagues and the administration, but she gave a great deal of credit to you as well for your influence, your volunteerism and your hard work and dedication to the team. So, we'd like to publicly thank you as well. And I enjoyed following you on Twitter because I was getting live updates about what was happening at meetings, which was wonderful. We do have some plans in the fall and we do have some plans for focusing on the mock trial team and perhaps some ways to best recruit participants and celebrate the accomplishments of this team and teams moving forward and we do have some ideas. I appreciate you making this suggestion and I assure you we're having the same conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other resident's remarks?
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Serena. I'm Matt's mom and I just want to say, as a parent, thank you very much. He really told me how much work that you put into it and the wealth that you brought along with Ms. Geiser to the mock trial team. And as an aspiring attorney, he said he's learned a lot from you and he feels as he was a mentor. So, I know he's probably embarrassed in saying this, but I think I'll have to have a discussion with you. Maybe we could talk about some other things you can parent him on. But the second question you had mentioned earlier about how other schools use, get credits for this and I think that would be, I mean, mock trial has two kids that have gone through it, is an intensive club. It is not, you know, it is a very time-dedicated club to belong to and I just would like to see maybe something, you know, credits or some sort of certification come out of it.
And, you know, these trials that they do, they're not like a 20-minute exercise. They're two and a half to three hours because they're doing the business and everything else. So, they're preparing for, they're preparing for a three-hour trial, but they are solely involved themselves. They, I mean, I thank you for your compliment to me, but, you know, I was more bystander than anything else. I was tweaking. These guys did, these guys are doing all the majority of it. They were fantastic.
Great.
Really, really enjoyed it.
Great. I think clearly we want to maintain the momentum and build off it next year and your suggestion, Mrs. Weiss, is noted. So, with that, I'll see, is there any other resident's remarks to just add?
I just wanted to say something really quick. I'd like to thank the Board of Ed and I'd like to thank the high school for the opportunities they give us, students and the clubs and the activities that we get to participate in. And I think it's amazing that going in freshman year, I was able to find something that I loved and then able to try to figure out a career with it. And I'd like to thank everyone who gave us the opportunity and you guys who give us the opportunity every day to find a passion, find a dream and find something we love to do. There's just one thing, our high school, all of our students are working really hard and we're doing all these clubs and it would be so cool and amazing to see students get credit or some kind of recognition so they know that their hard work, hard work has paid off and if we can just push as many clubs and as many activities that we can open up our high school students because this is a critical time for us to really learn what we want to do and the passions we have. So, I'd like to thank the Board of Ed once again and I'd like to thank the faculty and staff at the high school and I'd like to thank community members like Mr. Moreno, Mr. Pincus and all other community members who really go out of their time, come and help us and that's what makes Elwood great is that community members will come, they will help us and they don't care that they're wasting time and not wasting time, losing their time. And I'd really like to thank them. So, thank you guys for the amount of news I was given and thank you. Matthew, thank you.
Matthew, since you've invested so much time with us, I'll give you a bit more. One of the things that we're very proud to be able to accomplish within the budget is I think you're aware and most in the community is aware that many of our co-curricular activities, our clubs, our physical initiatives have been funded by outside sources, whether it be the PTA or the Booster Club or private donation. What we did was we agreed on that co-curricular experiences and clubs are a very important part of the educational process. So, we included all of those experiences that were previously financed from outside sources in the district budget. So, what that does is it solidifies that we'll be able to continue to provide those opportunities and we can now look for those outside donors to help expand our programs for things that we may not be able to include. So, those groups that currently have a budget that's allocated to our existing clubs are looking to us to say, "Okay, how can we further help?" So, I think in the coming years, you're going to see even more diverse offerings and additional opportunities for our students based upon that wonderful outside support we receive and the fiscal ability to keep the clubs within the district budget.
Excellent. With that, any other resident's remarks? All right, seeing that this time, we'll move to our presentation and discussion items. Dr. Bossa, I will hand the mic back to you.
Thank you very much. As stated earlier, a major part of our focus this year has been moving forward with initiative that we hope will, that will hopefully result in posting a capital bond to our community. That will be a major focus of our work during the 1718 school year. But to really give a status report to the Board of Education and the community present, I'd like to call upon Ms. Lachman to lead us in the conversation, but we'll also point out that we're joined tonight by our Director of Facilities, Ms. McDonald, and our representatives from BBS, our architects, who will be able to answer questions that the Board may have and give a good status report of where we are through the work of the Facilities Committee towards posting a capital bond, Mrs. Lachman.
Good evening. So, we're, it's a little bit of a lengthy presentation, but we'll try to get through it a little quick and at the end, we'll take any questions the Board may have and anybody else. So, the focus this year of the Facilities Committee, actually it's been a two-year focus, was to prioritize the scope of work for the district, the buildings, the grounds and the facilities as a whole, utilizing what we do every five years is called a building condition survey. At that point, after we reviewed all that, it was to present the Board with the findings and a course of action for consideration to move forward. The sources that the committee used was the building condition survey was the primary source. We spoke with all the principals, administration, the custodians, staff members throughout the buildings, just to try to get a little bit of feedback to what they're seeing in their daily operations throughout the buildings, as well as what we're seeing from the administration top level, of things that we're knowing that we're replacing and repairing on a continuous basis. And then in addition, we did do a community survey a few months back and we were able to take the responses from that into consideration as we moved forward. So, the whole purpose of all of the work was to take care of some high-cost building enhancements that are needed to address critical safety, health and welfare issues that are impacting the students, the faculty and staff. We also looked at some programmatic enhancements throughout the district that would entice and move forward some programs that we're doing at this point. Voting on a bond proposition in 2017, which would be the fall of 2017, would allow for the work to begin in the district around spring 2019. There's currently a 34-month wait period for architectural review at the State Education Department. So, once we get through our process, it all has to get through SED. They review everything, tell us what's adable, what's not. They may make modifications, they may require us to do some work that we do not intend on doing based on certain items. So, once it gets through that review is when we would get a building permit and we can start doing some of the work that's been proposed. So, we currently have just over $10 million in debt on the books from prior years of bond projects. The aggregate payment is about 1.6 million that we budget for and the most of this debt does come off the books in year 2022. So, our payment goes down to just about half a million every year after that point and it continues to go down. So, the importance is to replace old debt with new debt. I know as a, you know, an individual, you never want to do that. If you can get rid of debt, that's better for you and your household. However, in school districts and especially in the current economic environment where the tax levy cap, replacing debt, old debt with new debt is critical because it stabilizes your tax levy and it helps continue your programs within the building and I'll get to that in a little while. So, our goal is to replace and upgrade aging infrastructure items that are nearing or at end of their useful life and improve and modernize classroom space to facilitate improved instruction. Some of the needs that we have, the roof replacement has been a hot topic of discussion and it's been for a couple of years, as you may know. We have major leaks occurring throughout every single building. This building and Harley Avenue being the two primary ones with the issues. Every time it rains, heavy snowstorms, most recently the ice storm that we had, we had a lot of damage take place throughout the district. We had to relocate students from classrooms while we could do some repairs. So, it's becoming disruptive to the educational environment now at this point in time and it's critical that we try to get this replaced. We have extensive masonry and asphalt improvements, which includes some sidewalk reconstruction and that's throughout the district and all the entryways. Americans with Disabilities Act compliance renovations. When these buildings were built, they were in code compliance with the ADA. Over time, things have changed and at this point in time, we're not in compliance, however we've been grandfathered in. So, it's not that we're being written up for it, it is things though that SED will require us to do with any project that we are proposing. So, this is becoming a requirement for all of our buildings. Floors, doors and hardware and safety measures, which we come district-wide. Auditorium upgrades, both here in the middle school as well as John Glenn High School. Some cafeteria upgrades district-wide. Correct some drainage issues that we all are very well aware of throughout the entire district. Some classroom upgrades where needed and improve the HVAC systems, which is our heating, ventilation and air conditioning throughout the district. So, these are just some pictures showing this is actually after the most recent storm that we had in March, some of the damage that took place. The first picture is in the nurse's office in Harley. The leaking came right through the wall and caused bubbling in the paint. The ceiling tiles were all being stained and being removed and the water was coming right through now at this point into the classrooms. They're not only coming through on the top floor, they're actually making their way down to the first floor of the buildings. They destroyed the district office, has reached some leakage now at this point. The hallways throughout the middle school, library sees some damage, the science rooms, it's kind of evenly dispersed as to where the damage is occurring now at this point in time. Drainage issues, which many are rare, of what is called Link Elwood over at John Glenn High School. We also have some issues on the side of this building where our custodial crew keeps a lot of their equipment. The tennis courts, they're seeing a lot of cracks within those, similar to our sidewalks. We're having cracks in uneven areas between the brickwork and the concrete. So, these are things that we're looking at that are visual. There are some of those things that everyone is starting to see and we really need, we need to get this safety care for safety purposes. So, I'm just gonna go through the building summary for each building. We have not tied specific dollars to every single project. Those are things we're still continuing to work on with the architects to make sure that we can get the best estimate out there. So, some sample items for Harley Avenue, again, roof replacement you'll see on all four buildings, ADA compliance you'll see on all four buildings, the hardware for the doors to meet fire code regulations, which is similar to the ADA. We were in compliance when we built it, the buildings were built, things have changed. So, we are now having to come up to code compliance with that as well and again, that's something SED will require us to do with any capital project. Ventilation and exhaust fans, replace some floors, upgrade the fire alarm system, abating the pipe tunnels, again, you'll see that within most of the buildings and that's underneath the crawl spaces of the buildings, there is what's called asbestos and that's on the insulation of the pipes. And in order for our guys to go down there to do any work, they have to suit up, they get trained every year on how to do that. But there do come times where we actually have to hire a contractor that is trained in order to go down there and do the work. So, by getting rid of the asbestos underneath all the buildings, will allow our guys to get in there and do the work themselves and we won't need to contract out much longer. And then we have some drainage issues over at Harley, the West Playground, where we just installed a new playground area and we did fix the drainage underneath that particular apparatus. The continued area down by the swings does still have some flooding issues and that is something we're looking to take care of permanently. So, over at Boyd, again, as I mentioned, all the other items, the hardware, the ADA, compliance, the pipe tunnel abatement, the fire alarm system. I know a lot of this stuff is not fun, but there are things that are needed and things that are required. The big fun part for Boyd is a new drop-off loop for parents. It is, as many know who have children over at Boyd or try to pass through Boyd, a drop-off or dismissal time. It is a nightmare to get through there due to the traffic congestion. So, this is what our proposal is at this point. So this is what our proposal is at this point in time. It is still being discussed. It is not a final document. We are working with the building principal and constituents to try to determine if this is the best solution. But what you can see is, if I can do this. This here creates another lane, so we push the sidewalk back a little bit into the fields that are there, and we would create a third lane, which would be a drop-off-only lane. So our traffic could continue to flow up and down the hill without any congestion. And this lane, you can see, would be starting after the bus entrance there. So it would allow for the parents to enter into the drop-off lane, come through, drop off, and then just exit the building safely. So again, this is a proposal at this point in time. This is what we've come up with based on conversations, what we've been witnessing. And we're continuing to look at this as we move forward. So middle school, again, very similar items. We, as you know, district office is also in the middle school here, and we have some air conditioning issues going on over there. One person in one office controls the air for three different offices, where one may be like it cold and some like it hot. It is becoming a little bit of an issue. Keep in mind, we are twelve-month employees, and on days like today, not having that proper ventilation does cause a little bit of disturbance within the offices. So we're looking to try to fix that issue. But for the most part, everything in the middle school is within the building itself, home to students. Cafeteria renovation, upgrade the family's consumer science rooms, the art rooms, and the music suite. Those are all just old rooms. They need facelifts going on in there. No major construction, but some facelifts. The major construction would occur right here in this room, the auditorium. We're looking to do the lighting, the ceiling in here, replace the chairs, replace the carpeting. Redo the stage, kind of just really renovate this space to make it a little bit more up to today's day and age. And again, here, the other thing is a bus loop renovation. As you know, here too, it becomes a little dangerous when you're dropping your children off. So here is the proposal we've come up with so far on this. Again, it is still being discussed. It creates a walkway from Kenneth Avenue up to the building. This is a sidewalk, which is now dividing the full parking lot in half, which allows you to come in and loop through here or come in this side and loop through. The parent drop-off is here as well as here, and all the buses would be parking here and with enough turn radius so that they are just pulling out. Buses are not allowed to back up, so it allows for them to just pull in and pull through. It eliminates buses parking along here and along the curb. It allows a path for children to walk safely from Kenneth Avenue through for all our walkers. Parents could even drop their children off here with a safe assurance that their children can get to the building without being run over in this parking lot. The parking, the bus, the parent drop-off loop here allows for a sidewalk so that the kids can get out safely without any traffic coming and going. So again, this is a proposal. This is conversations we're having. These are based on conversations we've had with the building administration as well as the architects, and we're continuing to look at these as another option. So with the high school, again, not much fun stuff. The fire alarm system, ADA compliance, flooring replacement, some wall construction on exterior walls that were seeing deteriorate. Sidewalk replacement, septic system needs repair in the back of that building. Not sure if you're aware, but that does flood out sometimes, and we do get it pumped numerous times throughout the year in order to prevent that, and then it back flows into the basement. So we're on top of that, and it's costing us money to have that pumped continuously. So we do need to fix the collapsed lines and the issues that are going on in the back of that building. Drainage in the parking lot to remove Lake Elwood for once, that is our goal. The tennis court replacement and reconstruction, auditorium, family consumer science renovations, and cafeteria and guidance suite renovations as well up at the high school. Again, these are not major construction items in any of these rooms. It's just facelift-type of work. New casework throughout them, new flooring, new lighting, new paint jobs, just to kind of give them a little bit more of a brighter feel. So these are some items that we have discussed, and they've not made what we call an A-list. Usually, we make an A-list and a B-list. We are still continuing the conversation. We've not finalized the list, but we wanted to bring to the board where we stand at this point in time to continue discussion. The wall padding in the Boyd and Harley gymnasiums could use replacing. There is padding there, and we could use some upgrading in that. Expand the parking lot at Boyd. The conversation is there's not enough parking for just school-wide events. So we do have drawings on and proposals for at this point how we would expand the parking lot to create at least sixty new parking spaces in the back of Boyd. It would not interrupt any playing field area. It would go into the backwoods area that we do, a property that we own. Replacing and updating, we have old wood paneling in some locations of the district. We're looking to remove that. Renovate the art shop at John Glenn High School, some science room renovations at the high school. And the big things were a concession stand for the football field, new scoreboard for the football field, and update faculty bathrooms district-wide. So these are items that we're continuing to discuss on the committee level. We're now asking the board to continue to discuss them between yourselves and think of, you know, what you're looking at, what you're hearing from the community, of what you want to prioritize as we start to move forward in this process. Money. What is this going to cost us overall? The overall, the building, the list we've built it by building proposal that we've come up with so far is just over $31 million. These are estimated costs. They're not finalized yet. We are still working on some things with the principals so that we can try to narrow down those costs a little bit more. The additional project slide is about $6.5 million. So all in all, it's about a $37 million project proposal that is shown here now. Our conversations, though, at the Facilities Committee level has been trying to say about $25 to $30 million capital bond project. So again, conversations are starting now in the public eye with numbers and more definitive lists than we had in the past. So we ask the community to have those discussions and provide feedback to us here in the district so we can try to get these lists out to exactly where they should be. The tax impact. How is this going to affect your pocketbook? There's a lot of factors that go into this. There's assessment values. There is what is the tax rate going to be? What are the interest rates going to be? What is our mortgage rating going to be? So trying to project four years out is tough, but we do the best we can with the information we have right now. So if we look at a $30 million bond borrowing when the debt expires, which is 1.9 million, we take on new bond payments at that point in time if we are successful with a vote in November of 2017. And based on our current fiscal condition, which is deemed susceptible to fiscal stress by the Controller's Office, given that our mortgage rating did downgrade just last year as a result of that, we're at a higher interest rate. So in speaking with our fiscal advisors, they're telling us to project anywhere from a 3% to 4% interest rate. So when we take that, the current assessed values that we're working with, you're looking at an average of $65 per year increase on your taxes. If we are successful with keeping fiscal stability within the district, removing the fiscal stress designation from the Controller's Office, building our reserves, and not running a deficit, we can get that lower interest rate. And if we're successful in doing that, we're looking at about $20 a year for the taxpayer. Again, all things considered, that assessed value stay as they are. Assessed values are dropping. As they drop, your taxes go up. If assessed values start to go up, those numbers will continue to go down, so it will be a less impact on the taxpayers. The goal of this is to provide minimal impact on taxpayers. So that is why we're keeping a critical eye on what projects we do and try to keep it around a $30 million range in order to do that. So when it comes from old debt to new debt, a lot of people have acts. Administration and board members and community members have acts. If you lose debt, then we're going to save money. However, in the tax cap world, it doesn't work like that anymore because that becomes part of your exclusion in your formula. So when you take debt off the books or put new debt on the books, it could negatively impact your tax levy. You could have a negative tax levy. Just recently, values from 30, their tax levy was negative 15%. That was their limit. So just think of something like that and what it would do to our programs here. It decimates your entire district. And that's because you're taking on debt or losing debt will have a big impact on what you're doing. So the goal is, as the debt falls off, let's just bring the same amount of debt right back on the books to stabilize the tax levy and the tax rate in the end. I know it's a little hard to see on this slide. This will be posted up on the website for you to take a look at. It will be up tomorrow, so you can understand a little better. But what I've done is I've projected out what the tax levy could possibly be four years from now. So if we're looking at a tax levy in the year 2021, and it's keeping all items constant, it's assuming CPI 2%, our pile of payments we have, because we do have a schedule of those payments, so those numbers are locked-in numbers. The capital exclusions are based on what our debt is at that time and what we are projecting our building aid to be at that time. It creates a 2.13% tax levy limit that we can go to without an override. If we don't take on additional debt in the year 21, '22, we're down to a capital exclusion from 1.9 million to $48,000. That then provides a negative 1.7% tax levy. So we would be making major cuts to our budget and to our programs in order to reduce our revenue and to meet our needs on the budget. If we maintain debt and we just replace that old debt with some new debt, we go from a 1.9 million to 2.2 million, we're looking at a 2.75% tax levy. So in year one, you're at a 2.1, and year two, you're at 2.75. Again, all things considered with CPI and assessed values, there's a lot of factors here, and this is four years out. So the further you get out and we execute your projections, yeah, but this is what we can, the best thing we can come up with to demonstrate what happens when you expire debt off your books. And when you see those negative tax levies out there with voters, it's because they're losing that debt and they're not successful in getting new projects going on to the books. So some other considerations as we move through this process would be to either set up a capital reserve or repair reserve in the future, which would require vote approval. So that is something for the board to consider. It is not just by board authorization. It's voter approval, and it's for specific items. The other is utilize some general funding for what's called $100,000 projects. These are projects that you can do every year. They're done in a one-year time. Building aid starts flowing immediately thereafter. So you take that $100,000 hit in your general fund budget in year one, but then you just budget for that every year. So you're able to start tackling some of those smaller projects by doing this through the general fund budget process. My organization, Association for School Business Officials, is advocating right now to increase that to $250,000 so that schools can start getting more done. As prices are rising, it's difficult to get some major work done. So some of those items that are either on the B-list or on the A-list, we could probably start tackling, such as the faculty bathrooms that you repair. We might be able to start working on those. Some of the asphalt work that needs to be done. So we're still learning about this. We haven't done it here in Elwood before. I've been going to a lot of conferences, working with the architects, working with council, trying to get a better understanding of this because this is something that we are going to start looking into to start developing into our 2018, '19 budget process. So our next steps for the bond is continue the conversations with community and staff members. In early September of 2017, we'll present with the architects, BBS are the district architects, a final project list for board review and authorization. The board then makes an assessment of environmental impacts on the project, which is called SECR, that is required by law. The board doesn't make the assessment. I'll let you off the hook on that one. We have an environmental company come in, and they recommend the board and use this offer instead. Bond council will prepare for us necessary resolutions for adoption by the board, and we're looking at possibly late September for that. Publication of legal notice will go out for a vote in October of 2017 with a potential bond vote either late November or early December. This is the timeline. This is the timeline that the Facilities Committee has been working diligently with. We've met our goals successfully this year. We've been hard at work trying to come up with these lists as best we can. BBS is interning numbers around to us overnight, trying to get their own other. They've worked with many districts, and they've been successful in getting us the information we need so that we can get it out to the board to start these discussions in the community. Some other things that are going on in the district that you'll start seeing is the energy performance contract. About two years ago, the board passed a resolution authorizing us to go after RFP for that. The RFP was actually just released today on the streets. So we're looking for the contractors' responses to come back to us. And what the energy performance contract does is it, there's no cost to the taxpayer, so there's no voter approval required. It's just board resolution. The energy savings that you see through these projects pay for the debt that you take on. So it's a one-for-one expense in the line. You're reducing your utility expenditures, but you're building on your debt line, but it's a net effect. If you don't have that savings in the line item, the contractor has to pay the district the difference. So therefore, there's never an impact on the taxpayers as a result of this. Some things that we are looking at are the HVAC controls, the boilers, some lighting, solar panels. There's an expansive list. We're looking at about $5 million for this project to go forward with. So we're hoping over the summer months to have a final proposal of what's called an ESCO to the board so that we can begin work. Our goal is to work with this in conjunction with the bond so we know what needs to be in the bond and what we can put in the EPC. These two pieces work critically together because what we can throw through the energy performance contract at no cost in the district relieves some money from the taxpayers on the other side. The, I think that covers everything. The other thing is the smart phone projects, which we started last year. The state has approved our first draft. We do still have about $700,000 left to spend on that project, which we're having conversations about how to do. We're doing an upgrade of the phone system, upgrading security systems, and upgrading our wireless access points district-wide. So currently, the security camera upgrades are taking place. You may have seen wires dropping from the ceilings. And when you're here at night, they are in the process of installing that. We anticipate September 2017 for that budget to be done when the children arrive back to school. The telephone system is well underway. We're going live with the new phones in July, July 5th, actually. And the wireless access points, that's in process as well, and the anticipated ending of that is over the summer as well because there's a lot of wiring involved, so we're limited as to when the contractors can get in to do some of this work. So there's a lot of moving parts, but we're trying to make sure we can get everything to maximize our dollars for all these projects. Questions from the board?
Just a quick comment before we open up for questions, please. First of all, thank you, Mrs. Lott, for a very thorough report and for all the hard work that's been done by the team. We are much further along in this process than I anticipated being at the conclusion of the school year. It's really been a very strong focus and a lot of hard work to get us where we are. I do want to give a caution note to those here in the community and those who may be watching the archive video that we know is well-visited post our meetings. All of this is our current state in what we are discussing surrounding the bond. None of this has been finalized. There are no decisions that have been made. This is the board's first real in-depth view of the discussion, and I think it's important to know that this is a fluid process and that there'll be many other opportunities for community input, further discussion, and continued examination of our priorities. I don't want anyone to have the misconception in the room or viewing at home that this is what to anticipate seeing in final form. These are all potential items. These are all priority items, but this is not a finished product. This is a fluid process that will continue throughout the summer and into the school year next year.
Great. Dr. Bossel, thanks for that additional context. With that, I'll open up to my colleagues on the board. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question with the EMS parking lot. Would you be able to go back to that slide? Okay, so I see that the cars enter on the right side.
They enter both sides, actually. They can come in.
No, I'm talking about on the right side.
Okay.
Right. Yes. No. So right now, we have a major problem getting into that drop-off area because you have buses coming in and out from the high school in one lane, and then we tend to all get backed up trying to make the left into that area. And some of the cars are blocking buses. They're in the middle of two lanes. The buses that are trying to get through to the high school are, they're just all the way backed up to Kenneth Avenue. It doesn't work coming in from that side. So I don't know if there's a way to come in off the Kenneth Avenue side and then swing out where you guys have the proposed entrance?
One thing that we've discussed after we started looking at this proposal that came up is let them come in this way but come out straight. So you don't have to loop out and come out this entrance here, but come out straight here.
It doesn't work now because of the busing coming back and forth through the middle school and the high school. We're always jamming buses up. The other issue I see here is this is a single-lane contained drop-off. People, the few cars that are going to be in that area are stuck in that area until the person in front of them moves. And I just foresee that. And I just foresee that not working. And then how many parking spaces are we actually losing with this design? And is anything else added in here to make up for the loss of space? Because I think very, very many. Carrie, listen?
No, I don't, you're not losing any spaces with that design?
Do you want to come off the floor? Sorry.
Because there's like a big sidewalk running through the parking lot where all the existing spaces are right now.
So, okay. So the proposal that you see there is, right now, no loss in parking. I mean, not just the way we recomplete the space, it's how we readjust the parking and configuration. So you should be, and I think, and I kind of discussed your, your spaces available. This was, obviously, as Carrie had mentioned, a first flush at what we had gotten as feedback in our initial meetings with the building president. Some of the other concerns about students walking, walkers was a big concern, and that's what byproduct of the central walkway was. And we can continue to have that dialogue in terms of how we would do the power drop-off and keep that separation from the parking as well. There was a lot of coagulating with things going on. The big change that you see is how the buses actually line up, which is on a diagonal, so that keeps the buses from having to back up into that traffic lane. That was kind of a real driving force that started the entire.
So did you widen the bus area?
Yes, we did.
You took from the tail? Sorry.
The center median that we have out there right now, that's gone. So the center median is gone, which would have been this. This gets pushed back slightly, which allows for enough of a swing area here on the buses to pull in on the diagonal and then pull out. Here and here, we have the same amount of parking spots as we currently have.
You have to remember that when you have a diagonal parking, like you do now, you actually get less spaces, because they take up a longer distance along the curb line. So if you notice now, we've got perpendicular parking, so it takes up actually less linear footage along the curb line.
So I think Mrs. Mollito, those are good points. I think the facilities committee should work with the administration to reevaluate these suggestions. I think they're good, and I think that's a place that we've dealt deeply into what other options we may have with our engineers.
I mean, optically, it looks great, and, and you would think it would work, but just picking up and dropping off every morning, it's a nightmare.
I think that real tangible feedback is good. I think the facilities committee should take that into consideration, and this is exactly the iterative process that we expect to have. We have initial guidance. These are very tangible, real drawings that allow us to envision what is being proposed. And if there's some tweaks, I think that's the right place to address.
And this will, this entire presentation with these pictures will be up on the website tomorrow, and I encourage the community to take a look at it and provide feedback to myself, Dr. Boss, or Mr. McDonald's, so that we can continue the conversations and find out what is the best solution.
Great, so those, that feedback is noted. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the members of the board?
Just wanted to make a comment and maybe a suggestion. Possibly, oh, first, thank you for your suggestion. We'll deliver it back to the facilities committee and discuss, but possibly where the dropout, drop-off is, because we have a sign maybe that says, "Through traffic, drop-off in through traffic." So we have people, either just to drop their kids off, and then as we do have vice generators that come, and they're waiting for their child to be picked up, they have a suggestion, and then we can divert them to go into the parking area, park their car, wait for your kid, so you don't ingest of the through traffic.
That becomes a cultural change. It becomes administration and security out there directing that traffic, and it's, it would take time to get into that. I know personally from my children, the amount of letters I would get home from the principal saying kindly, "Parents, stop stopping there, getting out of the car and helping your child now. Just pull up, let your child get out of the car and move on," in order for the traffic flow to continue. So I think that it would become a, it may take a year or so to get into that habit and to break the habit that we currently see going on right now, but, which is why we need to continue the conversations to see what is going on now and what's the best flow for the future, and how do we fix the issues that we're having with the backup.
If I may suggest, I think it's important that when we plan facilities committee meetings to further focus on the bond, we look at certain projects in isolation. And I think we have to look at parking and traffic flow in totality on campus. We are also making recommendations to change what is happening at the high school, which will have an impact on middle school. And I think it's important that we involve those who have an expertise in traffic flow and charge engineers with examining these types of questions. And, and the type of work that we can do in committee with the right people around the table to really get into the inertia of the plan is how we'll spend the next several.
Great, so Mr. Tomeo is a member of the facilities committee. Could you make sure that we add that to our agenda, administrators on the committee as well, to make sure that we do that deep down?
Traffic, they should be.
I just also wanted to note, thank you for adding the pictures. It really gives you a depth of what is going on here. We are a community with pride, and some of these things are not reflective of who we are, and, you know, the cracks in the tennis courts, we have great sports programs, you know, we want to hold our head up high and have our facilities reflect who we are. And some of these, some of these pictures are disturbing and we're in dire need of repair.
Expect to see more pictures and more graphic displays of the types of things we're talking about. For the purposes tonight, we do not feel the need to charge Mr. McDonald going up on the roof and showing damaged areas and all of that. We will in the future. I think it's important when we finalize the priorities, we give a very visual display of the needs of the community. We will do that. We will invite the community members once the bond proposal's been finalized to towards some of those things that we're discussing. So anyone that has those types of concerns can really see. Mrs. Mollito, I think I made a comment at a previous meeting about how our instructional program is so strong, the quality of our teaching is so strong, but our facilities don't necessarily reflect the importance that this community places on the educational process. And we really want our schools to be a showcase of the community. So I would agree with you that there are many priorities within the district that will hopefully be strongly supported, strongly supported by the resident.
Yeah, the only additional point I would make on that is I think our, our current facilities team does a remarkable job of holding things together, the chewing gum and bail inquiry, I think. But it needs to be understood that the purpose of a bond is to be able to fundamentally address some of the things that are past the point where we can incrementally kind of patch things together. Roost being a very tangible example of that process.
And as we have discussed before, we have no capacity to include some of these large-ticket items within the tax levy cap. The only way to truly make this sizable investment into our facilities is through the capital bond process.
So being conscious that we have a full agenda, are there other comments, questions? Mrs. Freed?
Which I think is why a lot of our surrounding districts are, we're seeing bonds coming up, because all these buildings were built around the same time, and they're all kind of deteriorating at the same rate. So Carrie, just so everyone watching can understand, the reason that, you know, this whole, it's very, as Mr. O'Ness said, it's counterintuitive when we're looking at taking on a, a bond and then saying, if we don't take on debt, our tax levy will be hurt.
It goes down, but it goes down to a negative point, where we're already struggling with the ta, the low tax levies of, you know, we were able to get through it this year because we had a lot of things work in our favor. TRS rates went down, we had a significant amount of retirements. If those things don't continue in the future, TRS rates typically go up, health insurance rates typically go up 10, 12%, contractual salary obligations, if we don't see retirements, those things are going up at a much faster rate than we can bring in on the revenue side. So by having that negative levy that you can go with and you're reducing your revenue significantly, you're going to be decimating your programs.
I, I think that some people, some folks don't understand when it's a 2% tax cap, they say, okay, everybody gets a 2%. But that the state uses a formula based upon debt and many other factors to figure out what, what our tax levy will be. So it's really important to, I think, constantly explain that at every bond, because it, it's very counterintuitive to understand that. A question that I got at the taxpayer meeting the other night was, it's my impression that all these roofs are the original roofs that are being patched. Is that accurate?
That's not accurate.
So we had a new roof put on, 20 years ago?
These roofs are about 20 years old.
They're 20 years old.
And that's how long they're supposed to last throughout the year?
And they last about 20 years.
They are not, they're falling apart. They're delaminating, they're deteriorating, and we are constantly attaching. And any kind of disturbance on weather conditions.
Would you mind coming to the mic so we can get your, just so the participants at home can get the benefit of your insight?
Sure.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate what I said, they're 20 years old, they're at the end of their life, and they are deteriorating, delaminating, I guess they're falling apart from insulation below, and they need to be patched, just to keep them serviceable so that we don't have bad news. But any kind of, you know, weather condition that adversely affects them, like the ice storm we had in March, which sat on, compressed them, caused seams to separate, that allows the water to come, and was gushing in some instances, so.
I mean, I think there's a set of lockers that hasn't been used in years in the middle school because of water.
That's true. Yeah, that's a different issue, but in total, the roofs need to be addressed in a major way, so that we can have confidence that the structure underneath will be drawn.
So I think to answer the question, not the original, but roofs that have
Are 20 years old.
Unexpected life and are in need of replacement.
Thank you.
Do.
And Carrie, the other considerations page would be something that we would do prior to this bond?
No, these would be what we call B items, B-list. Typically, when you go out for a bond, you have an A-list and a B-list. You have the hopes that that A-list comes in under budget, and then when that happens, you then have the B-list to backfill and get some more work done. So that would be the goal, is to come in under budget and be able to accomplish more things.
Thank you. And then the only other thing that someone had asked me, because we've seen this in the past in, in just, in our district and surrounding districts, about guarantees for work. Is that part of the RFP process when we go out?
That becomes part of the prepared process, if I'm correct, Fred? It would be part of the bid documents, and we don't prepare the bid documents, legal prepares them in conjunction with the architects as well as administration. We all work together to do those. And I can assure you that Ingerman Smith does not let anything go out probably without guarantee. Our EPC, RFP went out today after many hours of deliberation and conversations and conference calls to make sure that we had everything in there to protect the district from everything.
Technically, our bid specs and the ones prepared by Ingerman Smith call for a three-year guaranteed labor and materials guarantee on typical products. On things such as roofing, you'll actually get a 20-year guarantee on the roofing. So it depends upon the different system, but there are absolutely guarantees that are built into specifications.
Thank you. And thanks for the, to the Mrs. Weiss and Mr. Tomeo for all their work on the facilities committee, and Mr. McDonald's, and all our community residents.
Yes.
It was a big year for you guys.
Thank you. I think the work will continue. Any other questions related to the facilities committee update on the bond as well as the energy performance contract? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Boss, I will turn back to you for the VOE health insurance option update.
There is a request from the member, from the Board of Education to ask Mrs. Lott to pursue the option of offering healthcare insurance to members of Board of Education. So she's prepared an overview that we, was distributed, it was like this, from members of the board. So Mrs. Lott, you want to take the board quickly through that?
So just so everyone is aware, Board of Education's are legally allowed to take health insurance that is offered by the district. However, it is at no cost to the district. It is 100% funded by the board member. In order to do such, though, the board has to pass a resolution to allow it. We would then contact Nisha, who is our insurance company, and let them know that that has occurred. Again, it is 100% contribution by the board member, there is no cost to the district. What happens then, when the board passes that resolution, we send everything up, the, the board would determine an effective date for that. If an individual chooses to take the insurance, it would be effective July 1. They do have 30 days to make a decision after that, and it would go retro to the first day of eligibility. If 30 days passes from that first day of eligibility, there is a three-month waiting period for which a member to take on the insurance. And then it would, from that process, it would just take on our regular enrollment process for joining, which would require various verifications from the family members in order to enroll in the insurance company. So the sheet was provided, the current rates for individual and family are on there, the documentation that's required for enrollment, should any board member be considering moving forward with this. If the board would like to pass a resolution, I would need the specifications as to what date of eligibility effective you would like to do it, and we would like us to put that resolution forward.
Any questions or comments on the update on this option? Okay, seeing none, we'll move, is there anything else, Dr. Boss, or can we move to financial? Okay, we'll move to financial matters. The first item is recommend the board acknowledge a receipt for auto of the following treasure reports for the month of March and April 2017. Revenue reports through April 30th, 2017. Cash flow reports for general funds through April 30th, 2017. Budget status reports through April 30th, 2017. Trial balance reports through April 30th, 2017. Executive summary through April 30th, 2017. Extra classroom reports for the quarter end through March 31st, 2017. School lunch fund reports for the months of March and April 2017, and the claims fodder reports for the months of March and April 2017. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Mollito, seconded by Mr. Tomeo. Those in favor? Five, zero. The second financial matter items is recommend the board approve the budget transfers. Do I have a motion to approve the budget transfers? Okay. Motion by Mrs. Mollito, seconded by Mrs. Freed. Questions or cons? Mrs. Freed?
Just one quick question. Carrie, can you just explain that there was a $32,000 budget transfer, and it just said reallocation of salary credits? Can you just explain that?
Sure. When we develop the budget each year, we develop it based on the current staffing structure. When the new year begins, a lot of staff shifts around, either between buildings or sometimes media departments. There's very, a lot of variables that come into play. So we then have to move the monies in order to follow the individual. So we do have a lot of budget codes. Our budget structure is set up by department and by building. So when that occurs, we need to be, be able to transfer the monies along with those individuals. And as we're starting to close out the year, these codes are starting to see negatives, so we need to make sure we transfer the monies that were originally in a different line for that individual into the line of which they're actually working. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor? Five, zero. With financial matters handled, we'll move to item, pay on our agenda action items. I would like to take them in aggregate with the following addendums and adjustments. In terms of personnel adjustments, we do have one walk-in item, which is an MOA. I will read this for everyone's benefit. This would be item P8 within the personal agenda, and it reads as follows. Be it resolved at the Board of Education of the Elwood Union Free School District approves and ratifies a certain memorandum of agreement dated May 18th, 2017, between the negotiating representatives of the Elwood Union Free School District and the negotiating representatives of the Elwood Secretarial Association, and authorize it to Board President to execute said memorandum of agreement regarding the possible donation of sick dates by unit members. The other adjustment of note prior to taking that for motion and approval in aggregate would be the removal within the business agenda section of item H1B. Is that everything, Mrs. Lott? Okay, so with those two caveats, the MOA, the walk-in MOA that I read, as well as the removal of H1B within the business agenda, it's just a contract that was removed and is, has a line through it on the documents circulated. Do I have a motion to take those action items? Motion by Mrs. Mollito, seconded by... Motion by Mrs. Momalito, seconded by Mrs. Freed. Questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor, five, zero? Yes? Five, zero. Having concluded our action items.
Maybe just a second.
What's that? I will ask Dr. Bossert to make a couple of brief comments about some of the action items we just approved.
Very briefly, I would like to thank the Board for their support of the items that was brought forward by the administration and highlight just a few of them. I'd like to congratulate one of our food service workers, Donna Burton, who has been a long-serving member of the district who has submitted or intend to retire at the end of the school year, so we congratulate her. The Board also saw fit tonight to support the tenure recommendation for a number of members of our faculty and staff. So congratulations to those many members who were candidates for tenure, which will become official in every term for the beginning of the next school year in most cases. And we will celebrate at the June 15th meeting those who are just tenured by the Board or will be tenured, those who are retiring, and those who have provided 25 years of service to the school. So I won't recognize them now, because we will have an elaborate recognition for them on June 15th, but I do offer them congratulations if they are watching from home, as I know many of them are. The Board just voted in favor of your tenure. In addition, there were some other action items taken by the Board. There are many members of our faculty and staff that are not part of a labor unit, they are not unit members. So with each of them, we have independent labor agreements that have to be renewed on an annual basis, and the Board just saw fit to do that with many members of our staff. One of those individuals was the superintendent of schools, who an amendment was made to the contract, and I thank the Board very much. The most significant item within that amendment is adding an additional year to the contract. For those that are not familiar with New York State education laws that pertains to the employment of a superintendent, the maximum term that can be contractually afforded to a superintendent of schools in New York is five years. When I originally came to the Elwood School District, the Board was kind enough to offer me a five-year agreement. One year has passed from that agreement, and due to the actions that the Board just took, a fifth year has been added to a term that will begin on July 1st and extend five years. So on a personal level, I cannot thank the Board of Education enough for the confidence that they have shown in me through this year. I feel that we've accomplished a great deal together. I appreciate all of your hard work and support of the initiatives brought forward, and I look forward to five more years that will hopefully be as productive, and I appreciate the level of confidence.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Bossert. I know I echo the feelings of the entire Board. We're extremely pleased with the work you've done thus far this year, and extremely excited to have you continue to be the leader of our district going forward, as we all deserve, and we appreciate everything you've done. So with those additional comments, I will move to our second residents' remarks. I think we're down to five people remaining. So remarks are limited to items voted on and/or discussed at this business meeting. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comments should be kept as brief as possible, may not exceed three minutes, consistent with Board Policy 2351. Public discussions of matters relating to staff, students, or others that wish their reputation, privacy, or rights of due process could in some way be violated and strictly prohibited. With that, residents' remarks.
We're getting away at it.
Good evening and thank you. First, I would like to congratulate Tuesday's big winner, Mrs. Lamenda and the Lamenda Children. Mike, thank you for your service to the Board. It was a pleasure to work with you for five years, and you won't need this. Thank you. Real reason though I wanted to approach the Board this evening was to implore the Board to discontinue any further consideration regarding adding the eligibility for a board member to participate in healthcare benefits. One of the positive things about serving on Board of Education compared to other elected public positions is an absolute voluntary position with no additional benefit. While the healthcare coverage that was discussed tonight, potential eligibility, would be out of pocket for any Board of Education member that did take that coverage, that does not mean that that coverage does not benefit. Having access to, and Mrs. Lachlan correctly, if I'm, if I'm wrong, a Cadillac plan, right? It is a benefit. Just having near access to that plan is a benefit, and is a dynamic changer in regards to that volunteerism that we look for from a board member. I further remind some of the Board members that they have campaigned in the past under the premise of implementing term limits. Now, while term limits for school board members really cannot be enacted because it has to be enacted legislatively, some of those who ran on that premise did indicate that they would do so voluntarily. So I'm left to wonder, would somebody actually impose term limits on themselves if they were potential to lose access to this benefit? I think we really do need to call it a benefit, whether it's out of pocket or not. Second, Board members negotiate contracts, and health insurance is part of those contracts. So I really don't know how you get true separation from what you do as a volunteer once you start having the ability to take advantage of this benefit. I urge you to discontinue that conversation. I don't know who needs it, and whoever it is, I'm sorry they need it, and I'm sorry that I'm making this recommendation, but think beyond yourself, and think of future boards and the potential conflict of interest that this might pose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaplan. Any other residents' remarks?
Former onz, former and future.
Well, I have a small question, and I'm only representing myself in a little word of speech.
Thank you, Mr. Pere. Kaplan clarified he was only representing himself.
I actually meant I'm a former board member, resident. I guess I'll just say I disagree with Mr. Kaplan and leave it at that, because I believe that was, the availability of healthcare coverage, I think, was offered during my tenure on the Board, as well known, I remember all the particulars, but I never saw it as a conflict of interest for anyone, but that's just a difference of opinion. My bigger concern is we're talking about water, gushing for roofs, and some serious deficits in our buildings, and visit-out-of-ground conditions. And one mirroring my heart, as you've heard before, is tennis courts. And that these improvements won't be done until 2019, that's two years from now. So if we're up patching, you know, more, let's, the tennis courts will be unplayable and certainly dismanaged to our athletes if we just want to take that one aside, but, you know, we're talking about buildings. If it was my house, I wouldn't wait two years to repair the roof. So is there a way to do, instead of continually patching and spending money, you know, kind of throwing good money after bad, is what I want to say? Is there a way to expedite some of this work? Potentially, you just received $500,000, and I know it was put into the employee reserves. Is there a way to do some of these significant repairs without doing patch repairs, and then a few years later, come along and spend more money to do the repairing proper?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would love to answer your question. The answer to your question is yes, Mrs. Spelstra. There are other alternatives in order to prioritize some of these projects and have them done prior to an outside of the capital bond. I think if you looked around on that this week, on Tuesday, you noted that there were many propositions to establish capital reserve, capital reserves, and there were also propositions to the community to approve the use of capital reserves for specific projects. That's the process we can follow here. And the first step is to get ourselves in a positive financial position, to eliminate our reliance on fund balance, and to really have the district in a more stable fiscal position. We're well on our way to accomplishing that. I will credit Mr. Kaplan for pointing out his party words about the importance of relying upon the receipt of back aid owed to the district. That money has begun to flow into Elwood, and it changed our financial position a great deal. You did mention correctly the half a million dollars we received recently from the developer that helps a great deal, and it changed our financial outlook. What we can do then is apply fund balance that we achieve at the end of the year to potentially a capital reserve that we would ask the Board to support and the community to establish. We can then place money there and ask the community to support specific projects. My last two years in my former district, two years ago was establishing the capital reserve, and I noted that in this year's vote, they applied an expense, it happened to be replacing the roof at the high school, to asking the community to support that. And that's a way to have work achieved on a more intermediate basis and without having to wait for the bond to take place. Now, I must caution, for some larger projects, we do have that same lag in having plans approved at the state level, which right now is an 18-month lag. Say it again? Twenty? Thirty-four weeks. One of the things that I've heard discussed is that the New York State Education Department is considering empowering BOCs, local BOCs, to begin approving plans. That will help tremendously. It's something that, as the Superintendent's Association, we're advocating for. It's something that is being discussed with rigor, so I hope to see it accomplished, and that will move up our timelines tremendously as well. But I agree, we have some health and safety items that are priority that need to be addressed as soon as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. Any other residents' remarks? All right, with that, can I have a motion to conclude our regular business meeting of May 18, 2017? Motion by Mrs. Momalito, seconded by Mr. Tomeo. Those in favor, five, zero. Thank you all for attending and those participating.